Good morning. Today is June 6, 2022. Regular session of the Sangguyan Bayan of Santa El Loque Sur. Before we start with our regular session, I would like to ask everyone to please put on your masks. Put your phones in silent mode so as not to disrupt the proceedings of this regular session. This session is called Order. SBM Belia Belio will lead us in a prayer.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Immaculate Mother of Jesus, we honor you as God's chosen one, beautiful, beloved, and free from all sin. Keep what's over us, pray that we rise above our sins and failings and come to share the fullness of grace. Be a mother to us in the order of grace by assisting us to live your obedience, your faith, your hope, and your love. Mary, our mother, pray for us. Amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Panunupan ng katapatan sa watawat ng Pilipinas. Ako ay Pilipino. Oo ang katapatan na nunupan sa watawat ng Pilipinas at sa bansang kanya sa mga sasabesan. Ang netral, ang mga katapatan. Ang mga Pilipinas sa mga sasabesan. Ang mga Pilipinas sa mga sasabesan. Ang mga tao at mga sasabesan.
We dispense with the roll call considering that all members of the Sangguyan Bayan, including the two ex-official members, are present today so we can proceed with our regular session. First is the reading and approval of the minutes of the previous session. Copies of the minutes of the previous session were distributed to the members of the Sangguyan Bayan for their review. If there are any corrections to be made on the minutes, please say so. If none, what's the pleasure of the Sangguyan Bayan?
Mr. Proceeding Officer, may I have the floor, Mr. Proceeding Officer?
Sangguyan Bayan Member Retwa, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Proceeding Officer. Motion to adopt and approve of the minutes of regular session last May 30, 2022, at 9 o'clock point 29 in the morning, Mr. Proceeding Officer.
Do I hear a second?
I second, Mr. Proceeding Officer.
Motion you disconded, the motion is approved. Next, we go to the privilege hour. Do we have any member of the Sangguyan Bayan who would like to take the floor to raise a matter of privilege? Hearing none, we can proceed then to the first reading and referral to committees concerned of proposed ordinances, resolutions, communications, petitions, messages, and memorials. First item, Madam Secretary.
A resolution reactivating the Local Government Unit Performance Challenge Fund account with account number 3242101536 and the Congressional Fund with the account number 3242101315 at the Land Bank of the Philippines Narvakan Ilokosur Branch, certified urgent.
We have here a proposed measure to reactivate the current account of the LGU with the Land Bank of the Philippines. This is certified urgent by the Office of the Mayor.
Mr. Proceeding Officer.
Sangguyan Bayan Member Forre, you are recognized.
Since the proposed measure, Mr. Proceeding Officer, is to reactivate the account number, account of the, at the Land Bank of Narvakan for the Performance Challenge Fund, motion to immediately approve the proposed measure, Mr. Proceeding Officer, without passing in this second and third reading.
I second the motion, Mr. Proceeding Officer.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Do we have any other matters for consideration of the Sangguyan Bayan, Madam Secretary?
No more, sir.
No more? We can proceed then to the presentation of committee reports. We don't have any committee reports to be presented today. Okay, we can proceed then to our calendar of business. We have one unfinished business which I believe was laid on the table last May 30, 2022. This pertains to the administrative complaint filed by Ms. Elvira Harantilla against Mr. Ford Demeg of Barangay Kagawad of Barangay Quezon. Sangguyan Bayan Member Burgus, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Proceeding Officer. Considering that the ban in investigating administrative cases due to the recently concluded election, so may I now lift, may I now move that the administrative complaint filed by Madam Elvira Harantilla against Kagawad Ford Demeg of Quezon been now be lifted on the table and may I request our good secretary to please write a subpoena or summon to the respondent to submit his verified complaint within 15 days and upon, and immediately upon receipt of the per seven days upon receipt of the the investigation will follow. Thank you, Mr. Proceeding Officer.
There is a motion from Sangguyan Bayan Member Burgus to lift on the table the proceedings, the administrative proceedings to be conducted by the Committee on Good Governance arising from the administrative complaint of Ms. Elvira Harantilla against Mr. Ford Demeg Barangay Kagawad of Barangay Quezon. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Proceeding Officer.
The motion you disconded, the motion to lift. The item on the table is hereby approved. Madam Secretary kindly issue the pertinent issuances, documents to the parties involved. Okay. We have one item under business for the day. This is that this pertains to the proposed measure authored by yours truly, establishing the expanded municipal social pension for indigent persons with disabilities. We are now in the second reading. So with the indulgence of the members of the Sangguyan Bayan, I would like to ask the assistance of the sponsor, ah, the Committee on Health to assist me on this matter because I cannot stand up and walk because of some difficulty in movement right now. So again, we are now in the second reading of the proposed measure, expanding the municipal social pension for indigent persons with disabilities. The floor is now open for your questions.
Mr. Proceeding Officer.
Sangguyan Bayan Member Belia Belio, you are recognized.
Before, I will ask a clarification or verification of this draft ordinance, sir. May I ask the proponent to give us a brief explanation about this draft ordinance?
Before I, before the proponent answers that with the indulgence of the Sangguyan Bayan, so I can properly answer the question without me yielding or standing up from my chair, can I suspend the rules for a while, especially the use of the English language? Rule suspended. Okay. J. Question ni Sangguyan Bayan Belia, no mabaling nga ilaw-lawang ko. Dato ikat expansion laing, nagiagdama nga programa tiilinga Santa ngamangte iti municipal social pension kadagiti kailangan tayong at the disabilities. Da, remember last 26, 2019, if I'm not mistaken, this is one of the first ordinances that the Sangguyan Bayan and the LGU Santa passed. Giving a municipal social pension to children with disabilities. Kenasawen, ikan tiilinga Santa ti tulong pinansyal dagiti children with disabilities below 18 years old, below 18 years old. Tata, no binasa tayong nalain dahoy nilaon, dahoy baronga ordinanasa nga palpalawigan na dahoy agdama nga ordinanasa nga maikan meten iti municipal social pension dagiti indigent nga persons with disabilities 18 years old to
60 years old.
50
9.
9.
59.
59 years old. Tama ba yun nilagay ko, 59?
Yes, sir.
59 years old. So dahoy resulta iti tungtungan tayo idih. Especially no malagip yu idinapasamak nga programa'y di Santa Paradise. Dagiti may isa no nakipatpatang kayo kadagiti caretakers, guardians, dagiti persons with disabilities nga kakailean tayo, dagiti may isang request da. No mabalin, no kaya metlang ti LGU Santa, iextend tayo or expand tayo dahoy programa. Ag lalo dahoy agkarigatan iti igatang da iti agas da. When no dahoy pagplete da nga panagpa therapy, dahoy kasapulatit therapy. So no umanay metlang, kinagdamat lang umanay nga pundot ti Guberno Municipal, aumat dakes na, no patgan tayo da ta nga dawat da. So if you're going to read Section 3, the definition of terms, this is similar to the definition of terms provided for in the first ordinance that the Sangguyan Bayan passed. With the one difference, no, as to the definition of persons with disabilities. Under the old ordin, under the first ordinance, Section 3, Letter A, defined children with disabilities, but here, Section 3, Letter A, defines persons with disabilities. As to the eligibility, there's no difference, no? There's no variation or difference from the first ordinance, no? What we require here is, of course, the beneficiary, the applicant should be a Filipino citizen. He must be a bona fide resident of Santa for at least one year. Iklarok lang dahoy apo. Masapol nga bona fide resident di toy Santa ti at least one year. Tangamin, uray no ibagam nga tagasanta ka, no hangka nga residente di toy, aktwal nga residente di toy. Uray no ibagam nga bubutos ko di toy Santa, haangka nga aktwal nga residente di toy, haangka nga qualified ka dahoy nga programa. So dahoy di aktwal nga residente di toy for at least one year, ti agbenefisyo ka dahoy nga programa. May kanlo, must be registered as PWD. Ag basar tayo ka di registry iti PWD, di jay MSWDO. Ken may kapat, Letter D, di gross family income da is not more than 300,000 pesos. Tapno ti target tayo laang ka dahoy truly indigent. So we can so that the existing fund of the LGU will be sufficient, no? To provide the monthly social pension for the persons with disabilities. So masapol ti target tayo di toy is the truly indigent. And last, masapol nga, haanda nga umauawat iti anyaman pay nga tulong pinansyal agapo iti Guberno. Ah, kasi baka the duplication iti benefits nga maalatan. So again, Section 6, which refers to the screening, same with the first ordinance, no? Ah, kas na kunan ni apo Chairman iti Committee on Health and Social Services, haanin nga ma-screen dahoy di jay dati nga na-screenen nga children with disabilities, no? No, adah dahoy registering, ah, dati da nga tumang tanggap iti benefisyo as children with disabilities, handa nga may raman di screeningan para dahoy 18 years old above. Niyan dahoy di haan, dahoy di haan nga na-cover iti ordinanasa idih da per 18 years old above dangarod, isuda iti ma-screen, i-screen iti screening committee. Di requirements, klaromet di toy, nakaikabil ame di toy yan. Di ID da iti PWD, in issue iti Municipal Social Welfare Office. Ah, dahoy certification iti live birth, certification agaput iti barangay, ken anyaman nga prueba nga mangipakita iti annual income da. Again, add the authority ni kuanya, ni apo MSWDO di toy, glalo di jay screening committee not to make the requirements or the screening too burdens, too burdensome. We want to provide the assistance without too much difficulty on the part of the caretakers or the PWDs themselves. Okay, the funding source, this is very important. The funding source will come from the unexpended other MOEs of the Office of the Vice Mayor. So dahoy di rason na no apay nga inrequest ko, kada apo Budget Officer AD to increase the other MOEs of the Office of the Vice Mayor. As to how much, niya, ag depende dahoy di resulta dahoy initial screening ni apo MSWDO. But I believe we earmark manu di earmark ko di toy ng ID niya? Yeah. The existing apo data, it's more than enough, no? To provide the municipal social pension for these two quarters. Kasi of course, hangag retro ak, ah, the first and second quarter. So we can implement this program third or fourth quarter of this year. Yes, Sangguyan Bayan Belia?
Finish first, sir.
Yun na.
Finish first, sir. Finish first this, then before I question.
Okay, do we have any more questions?
Proceeding Officer, may I have the floor?
Yes, Sangguyan Bayan Retwa.
Thank you, Mr. Proceeding Officer. Yan tangay, add the nila da nga to 500 ti mayte ti kada disabled apo vice. Kit suggestion lang, Mr. Proceeding Officer, no? Ingat nga to tayo dahoy nga mang, pagbaling nga 750 pesos, diyay 500?
Wen, ah, at the point mo ni Jay, agapo da nguminam at ame nagpangato ame na pintas no ingat to tayo met niya. Niyan, again, ulitak lang dahoy di ni bagat tatay, ikaanay tay mampay basit. Since dahoy di initial, ah, no approbaran ti Sangguyan, no ipasa ti Sangguyan Bayan dahoy kat approbaran ni apo Mayor, ah, dahoy ti umunang, ah, roll out dahoy PWD, ah, dahoy expanded municipal social pension for PWD. Kit gaputa, hantay palang amo, niya, although add the initial nga numero ni apo MSWDO, niyan baka adupe niya min dahoy haang nga nag-register nga PWDs iti bar barangay, kit no ipangato tayo iti 700 or 800 or 1,000, baka makigtun tayo, di romar nga bilang, kit hantay kaya nga suportaran dahoy nga programa. So irugitay palang basit di napagpapatangan nga amount ti municipal social pension sa tayto kita, di panagpangato na, yeah? Sa tay kita, di panagpangato na. Tatikay tay nga mapasamak, masapol nga iinstitutionalize tayo ame, nga programa tayo para kadagiti member iti vulnerable sectors. Tapno, may awat metlang kanya dahoy tulong nga kasapulanda, yeah? We focus di, no kita niyo dat, we want to institutionalize tapno. Masigurado metlaang, yeah? Dahoy maawat da nga ayuda. Haang nga dahoy no sino laang ti asidag iti banga, iti may ikan. Niyan kat di, ame nga member iti vulnerable sectors, kadwa man, uno saan, may kanda iti tulong agapo iti Guberno, yeah? Niyan noted dahoy apo Sangguyan Retwa. No dakdak tal ti koleksyon tayo iti taxes or business permits tayo di toy, perhaps we can increase, yeah? Niyan, I would like to share also, ah, last Friday, this is one, relevant pa rin dito. Last Friday, we had a meeting, no? I asked, with the permission of the Mayor, I headed the meeting of the Local Finance Committee and the DRRM, together with Sang, ah, dalang Ligan ng Barangay President, no, we were there. The Municipal Budget Officer, although it's still not final, niyan ininformaran na ti Local Finance Team na 2023 at the reduction iti internal revenue allotment iti ame nga LGUs ti Pilipinas, about 14% reduction or 17%, if I'm not mistaken. Expected di, Jay. So ngarod nga hantay nga nagrecreate ti positions kas dinawa't dagiti Department Heads for this year. Kasi we anticipated that, the reduction of IRA. Remember, our annual, our annual revenue allotment, our internal revenue allotment is computed based on the national revenue collection three years prior. So 2020, for budget 2023, ti pagibasaranda is di collection iti year 2020. Kat year 2020, we all know that the pandemic started and there, I believe there's a deficit iti revenue collection iti national. Kit di, Jay. So iconnect ko kandim bagat tatay, Sangguyan Retwa, uray no napintas ko mga nga to tayo, gapu kadagito yung sairkumstansya, ken haang nga mapadpadaan, mabaling nga haang nga mapadpadaanan nga pasamak, hantay nga, na may mayat, no rugyan tay palang, di kaya tay talaga nga ited. Okay.
Sir.
Sir. Any other questions or clarifications?
Sir?
Yes, SBM Belia.
Can we go back to Section 3, Definition of Terms? Ah, can we include indigent for our definition?
Okay. How, how are we going to define indigent? We can include that, insert that, Section 3, Letter E?
Yes, sir. Sec, another, another clarification, sir, section?
Palpasenta pa 'yung uno na niya, before. So there is a motion from Sangguyan Bayan, okay, I will lift the suspension, no? Suspension of the rules, suspension of the rules lifted. There is, there is a motion from Sangguyan Bayan Member Belia Belio to include the definition of what an indigent is. So that can be Section 3, Letter E. So how are we going to define an indigent? Do you have any proposal, Madam? Okay, we can adopt the definition of the DSWD. Can we take note of this, Madam Secretary? Indigent. Any person with no visible means of income or whose income is insufficient for family subsistence as identified by the Department of Social Welfare and Development based on specific criteria. All indigents identified by the DSWD under the National Household Targeting System for poverty reduction and other such acceptable methods including the municipal community-based monitoring system shall automatically qualify under this program. Is the, is the inclusion or the definition to your liking, Madam Sangguyan Bayan?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Can, can you move for the adoption or approval of the insertion then? Of the definition?
Ah, Mr. Proceeding Officer, thank you, and I move for the approval of the insertion of the definition of terms of indigent.
Do I hear a second? The motion you disconded, the insertion of Section 3E defining what an indigent is, is hereby approved. Continue, Lucy.
Ah, Section 4, sir. Ah, just a clarification or verification of this section, establishment of the financial aid for children with disabilities. As per explanation, Mr. Proceeding Officer, as the author of this draft ordinance, we are, we have the zero to below 18 years old indigent children pensioner.
Madam, Madam Sangguyan Bayan, I think you have the wrong copy. Ah, that's the first copy that I sent out, which I believe is the wrong copy, so... But again, it's the same, under Section 4. Wen, ma di di ni ited, ken kangakopya? But under Section 4, I will read it. Establishment of the Expanded Municipal Social Pension for Indigent Persons with Disabilities. The LGU Santa Expanded Municipal Social Pension for Indigent Persons with Disabilities is hereby established in the municipality of Santa Illoco Sur. The LGU Santa Social Pension Program shall provide to all qualified indigent persons with disabilities a regular monthly financial aid of 500 pesos for their essential needs. Yes? Okay.
So, Mr. Proceeding Officer?
So did that answer your question?
Clarification, ma'ro, sir.
Your clarification?
So, ah, gaputa, ag ti pensioner, tetatag, diyay children with disabilities nga zero to, ah, zero to 16 years old, yeah? 18 years old, so that eh, already panakangal ko diya Section 4, di establishment niya di, Jay. It was not indicated nga, the expansion will be the 18 years old to 59 years old. So ah, i may indicate ko ma di ti draft tayo, dahoy di expansion tayo nga, it already ti ah, duduma nga ko ah. Dahoy di expansion kit will be 18 years old to 59 years old, sir.
Yes, correct. Na-miss out ko na niya. Namisout ko dahi niya. Thank you. Okay, we, because of the manifestation of Sangguyan Bayan Belia Belio, we'd like to amend section 4. The last sentence. The LGU Santa Social Si, Social Pension Program shall provide to all qualified indigent persons 18 years, insert, 18 years old. 18 years old to 59 years old.
Indigent, uh?
Okay, na quali, again. The LGU Santa Social Pension Program shall provide to all qualified indigent persons with disabilities 18 to 59 years old a regular monthly financial aid of 500 pesos for their essential needs. Is this agreeable to all members of the Sangguyan Bayan? Can you make that, uh, can you move to adopt and approve the insertion, Madam Sangguyan Bayan?
Uh, Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to adopt the
The insertion.
Uh, section 4 for the, uh, insertion of the indigent 18 years old to 59 years old indigent, uh, person of municipality of Santa.
Do I hear a second? Motion duly seconded, the insertion is approved. Okay. Ba't ko namisout yun? Okay. Do we have any other, uh, corrections or recommendations to improve the proposed measure? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the Sangguyan Bayan?
Presiding Officer.
Sangguyan Bayan Member Formoso, you are recognized.
May I move then for the approval of the proposed legislative measure in its second reading and be calendared for its third and final reading, Mr. Presiding Officer?
Do I hear a second? The motion duly seconded, the proposed measure is approved in its second reading and calendared for its third and final reading. Okay. It's, uh, okay. Do we have any announcements? Believe that we don't have any unassigned business or no measures on third reading, so we can skip to announcements. Do we have any announcements from the members of the Sangguyan Bayan? Okay. Uh, yes, Madam Secretary?
Sir, there's an additional agenda from the Office of the Mayor, sir.
Okay. Is there no objection from the members of Sangguyan Bayan to tackle the, uh, new communication from the Office of the Mayor? Hearing none, we can tackle it.
A resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into a renewal of memorandum of agreement with the National Food Authority to avail rice for relief distribution operation as part of disaster preparedness of the municipality of Santa Ilocosur.
Yes.
Certified urgent, sir.
La, again, as part of the discussion last Friday on the preparations of, uh, the LGU Santa for any typhoons, no, or calamities that may happen this, uh, time of the year, uh, we ask, no, we this, we, 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 we asked the, uh, GSO, the DRRM, ano, the Budget Officer and the DRRMO if, uh, all relevant or pertinent partnerships or MOA uh, is still active. So last session, the Sangguyan Bayan approved the renewal of the MOA between JTC and LGU Santa. So right now, the Office of the Mayor asking the Sangguyan Bayan to give him authority to renew our MOA with the National, uh, Food Authority, no? So this measure, certified urgent by the Office of the Mayor, what's the pleasure of the Sangguyan Bayan?
Mr. Presiding Officer, may I have the floor, Mr. Presiding?
Sangguyan Bayan Member Ritoa.
Since the proposed measure is urgent, Mr. Presiding Officer, therefore, move for the approval without passing the second and third reading.
Any other discussion?
Second, Mr. Presiding.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Do we have any announcements from the members of Sangguyan Bayan? Hearing none. If there is no objection, since it's almost 9 o'clock and about, uh, our online legislative training is about to start, if there is no objection, I would like to declare this session adjourned, session adjourned.